First item in business is the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilwoman Leanne Durfee will lead us into it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Tonight we will be led in our invocation by Reverend Kirk Blacksoe.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for this special meeting tonight, Lord. We ask that you would help us as we've had to reschedule because of July 4th where we celebrated our freedoms. We thank you, Lord, that we live in a country with so many freedoms. I pray that you would help us to remember that freedom is not a license to do whatever we want. Freedom is the ability to choose to follow you and to make tough decisions. We need your help tonight. We need your help in the future, Lord, for we have a lot of plans to be made and we want to do what you want us to do. We want to be a city that is a special place, a city built up on a hill that everybody can see and shines light to all those around. We ask God that you would help us do that. Lord, I pray that you would help this mayor, this council, the city staff to choose to follow you and your will for our city. Under your authority is the most freedom we will find. I pray, Lord, that you would bless this city and this county. It's in your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Kirk. Presentations. Where is the presentation tonight?
Nothing.
Okay. I didn't remember one. Okay. Next item is citizens' general discussion. We have two people who want to speak tonight. First one is Allen Nix. You'll have three minutes.
Mayor, I can't say anything in three minutes.
I know. That's why I reminded you. Also, be nice. Remember, that's in the rules.
My name is Allen Nix. I live at 113 Ben Hogan, Steenville, Texas. Mayor, council, staff, I appreciate y'all giving me the time to speak to you tonight. Having held one of those seats for a brief while, I understand your level of commitment and I appreciate that. And I thank you for your service to our city and the time that you dedicate to doing that. Thank you very much. I represent Nix Manufacturing, a family-owned business that we've been in business in Steenville since about 1938. We have a manufacturing facility at 750 North Paddock here in Steenville. We have recently opened a citizen collection station. Basically, that's a TCEQ licensed station where we can accept household garbage, yard waste, bulky items, things like that. We cannot accept hazardous materials, chemicals, pesticides, tires, batteries, things like that. There's a long list of things that we can accept. There's also a long list of things that we cannot accept. But I approached the council with this several years ago. They thought it would be a good idea because our landfill cannot take household waste and we can. It provides an outlet for those people in the city that can't make their collection or have problems or something. It also provides an opportunity for anyone in the county or the surrounding area to come and bring us their disposable items that we then have transported by waste connections to either our landfill, if it's a bulky item, or to the landfill in Weatherford. We have multiple hours that were open Tuesday through Saturday. Be glad to visit with anybody. If anybody has any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer those. It is a service that I think will be utilized by many members of the community and has already been utilized by a number of members of our community and the county as well. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Questions, Allen? Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Both up here and what you're doing.
Thank you.
Next person is Renee Thompson.
Hi. I'm not a great speaker. This is going to be very hard for me and I just ask that y'all show me grace and that you just listen to what I have to say. I'm a concerned citizen, grandmother, friend, and a voice for all concerned. I want to share with you the day that my life changed forever to share my personal experience and memory of events on June 24th of 2023 as I attended a private event at the city of Steenville's water park, Splashville. I was late to the event but immediately was met by friends and family. In the background, I hear the sound of splashing water and children and adults alike laughing as I'm making small talk and catching up. Joy and celebration was being had by all until the atmosphere quickly changed. My eyes were drawn straight to the commotion on the south side of the pool. I locked eyes with a frantic woman in a black dress. I followed her gaze to a man at the edge of the pool, bent down, and my body quickly resonated that something terrible had happened. As I moved from the table and am running to tell Randy and my family something is wrong, and I hear and will never forget a woman's blood-curdling scream. Suddenly yelling came from all directions, yelling for everyone to quickly exit the building. It felt like complete chaos as everyone scrambled to find their family members and gather their personal items as well as their thoughts. As we scrambled out, we gathered outside the gates. The gut-wrenching disbelief and agony set in as I hear a woman pleading to her child. "Look at me. Just wake up for mommy. Please wake up." Although we did not know the full extent of what had just transpired, we did all that we could do. We gathered in a circle and we prayed, and we prayed hard. But when the police and the EMS arrived, many, including myself, noticed they didn't seem to be in a rush. Many began to plead with the first responders to hurry and to move quicker, astonished that this had to even be said. I soon learned the scream I'd heard came from my personal friend Cassidy Williams as she witnessed her youngest son Colt's blue body being pulled from the water. It was Cassidy pleading with her baby boy to wake up, unaware that her six-year-old son was witnessing it all himself. Later, I received the call that four-year-old Colt Williams didn't make it. Colt lost his life to the first-ever drowning recorded in Erath County under lifeguard supervision. I was and am absolutely devastated. How could this have happened? Splashville has been open for approximately 15 years. What went wrong on this day in particular that's not happened before? What could have been done differently? My mind raced with what-ifs and I, along with many others in attendance that day, couldn't help but feel sadness, guilt, anger, and disbelief. Even today, as the days and sleepless nights pass, I play back every detail in my head. How could I not? I found myself in research mode and came across this, the definition of what a lifeguard should be. A lifeguard is an attendant, usually an expert swimmer trained and employed to save swimmers in trouble or near drowning at a body of water. A person on a beach or at a swimming pool whose job is to make certain that the people who swim are safe and to save them if they're in danger. And a lifeguard is a rescuer who supervises the safety and rescue of swimmers in bodies of water, trained in CPR, AED, first aid, certified in water rescue. But I do want you to hear me when I say this. I'm not trying to shed any negative light on the lifeguards, but lifeguarding is a huge responsibility. So whoever put them in this position needs to step up and take at least some responsibility, if not all. I do know there's a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board made up of 10 members, two meetings in two years, unlike they should be having meetings every quarter. In the state of Texas, you can legally be a lifeguard at the age of 15. According to the Steenville Parks and Recreation website, a 14-year-old can attend the lifeguarding program as long as you are 15 by the last day of the class. How many of you believe a 15- or 16-year-old in today's world is responsible enough to understand they hold life and death in their gaze every second they are on duty? Better yet, how many of you would trust a 15-year-old to watch your own children in a pool? Let alone a pool with a capacity of 660 lives that they are responsible for? There was nowhere near that many in attendance that night. On the day that Colt Williams lost his life, to my knowledge, every lifeguard on duty was a teenager or close thereof. The manager that let me add was under 25 years of age. Again, to my knowledge, left Splashville only to return to the premises when they received word of the drowning. Only one camera was working, but footage seemingly stops just prior to when the drowning occurs. The city has stated that they've hired an outside law firm to head up what they're calling an investigation. An investigation that I truly feel has been given misinformation and inaccuracies that could be cleared up if those running the investigation would interview or accept evidence from people in attendance that day. I personally have pictures and videos that show where the lifeguards were standing at the approximate time the drowning occurred. Videos and photos have been brought up and have been offered to be shown with it seems to be little interest. I can't think of one reason the city would not want to obtain any and all evidence of what happened that tragic day. Will we ever truly know what happened? I'm not sure, since the city seems to be accepting of doing bare minimum to get by, including, in my opinion, this investigation. You would think that with all that has happened, opening Splashville back up would be the city's least of concerns, but it's my understanding it's not. I believe there's much to be considered before opening it again. Lifeguard training, the number of lifeguards, the majority needs to be older lifeguards, not the minimum age, adult supervision, new camera systems to avoid any doubt of what happens in the future, the layout of the park, and the fact that columns and the obstacle course cause blind spots, issues, and so much more. There's so much to be said, but this by far should outrage the citizens of Steenville the most. Not one city employee, to my knowledge, has reached out to the Williams family to offer their condolences or help. The city has made counseling available to the lifeguards and EMT, but has not offered counseling to the child that found Colt Williams at the bottom of that pool, to the man that pulled Colt out of the water and administered CPR on his tiny blue body, to the people in attendance, not to the brother, not to the mother, not even to the father, not the Williams family at all. The mother has had to deal with so much, from the hospital to CPS being involved, to her phones being going through. And she hasn't even gotten to grasp that her baby is literally just drowned. On top of all of this, the hospital had miscommunication that caused them to be denied of certain things. Because you see, he was and is an organ donor. But graciously, there is someone that stepped up and cleared the miscommunication up for the family so they could focus on laying their sweet boy to rest. The Steenville Police Department, the city council, the city manager and mayor, all have a sworn duty to serve the citizens of Steenville. I firmly believe the city should and want to be responsible to every person that was at Splashville that night whose lives, like mine, have and will forever be changed. It is city property. It's a city pool, a city-administered event that the city charged and took money for and that was managed, regulated, and supervised by city employees. I will say this. I had seven grandchildren in attendance that night. The odds that it could have been one of them only makes me that much more committed that I will do everything in my power to investigate the incident myself and to make sure Splashville will not be reopened until it can be assured it will be safe. However, this didn't happen in my backyard. It happened in yours. Yet you seem to think you have no obligation or responsibility for this horrific tragedy. Each and every one of you are responsible for the life of Colt Williams on June 24th. I understand that you have to be reserved on things like this, but goodness, you still have to be human. With saying that, your focus should be on how to assure this never happens again. You should be focused on healing for a mother who lost her baby, a brother who lost his best friend, and a father that lost his son, and that a second child's name will never follow that of Colt Williams as a statistic. Will the city of Steenville find justice for Colt Williams and his family, or are you going to allow his death to be in vain? I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the virtual agenda is tax delinquent funds.
Thank you, Mayor and council and city administrators for allowing us to present tonight. That's a very tough act to follow. I'm so sorry about your loss. Okay. My name is Carrie Pickering and I'm an attorney for the Line Barker Firm. I'm here with my assistant Katie Rhodes. In our law firm verbiage, we refer to our assistants as area managers. Also, she serves as a semi-paralegal role. And we're also here with our Erath County Tax Assessor Collector, Jennifer Carey. And I believe I put one of these. Did everyone get a copy of the report? Very good. So we're just gonna, I know y'all have a lot on your agenda. There's a lot on everybody's minds, obviously, so we're just gonna kind of go through this. I want to thank y'all again for having us. The Line Barker Firm has represented the city of Steenville in delinquent property tax collection for well over 25 years. And we're also responsible for any litigation in district court that ensues in order to collect your delinquent taxes. So this report covers the timeframe from July 1, 2022, a little over a year ago, to June 1st, or really May, the end of May. And I apologize, we don't have more accurate data, but when I put this together, we didn't have the June information yet. So it's not a full year's collection, but almost. So that's the timeframe that we're dealing with here. So the first thing that I want to talk about is our litigation steps. So during this time period, July 1, 2022, to June 1 of this year, we filed 24 new lawsuits involving 34 properties. The suits sought the collection of $32,547 in delinquent-based taxes. Suit dismissals, we prepared and submitted dismissals in 22 suits involving 30 property accounts, collecting approximately $24,000 and some change in delinquent-based taxes. We do not dismiss a case until all of the taxes, penalty, and interest, all the court costs, abstract fees, and any attorney ad litem fees, if there are any, are collected. And we also won't dismiss the suit. We don't represent 100% of the taxing entities in the county, but we won't dismiss the suit until the other jurisdictions that we do not represent are paid as well. So we all work as a team. Even though the two firms compete a little bit, we all work as a team. We really get along and work well together. Judgments. So let me back up a moment. So the first part of our collection process in the year begins. Our tax collection calendar year is different from a fiscal calendar year and also a budget calendar year. We actually start our work on July 1 every year when what's called the current tax roll is turned over to the law firm for collection. That's also the date where an attorney's fees, which are statutory, and also pursuant to our agreement with the city, also attach on July 1. So for example, the current tax year that we're working with now is tax year 2022. So any tax year 2022 taxes that remained delinquent on July 1 of this year, that's when the tax roll, the delinquent roll is turned over to the law firm for collection and the attorney's fees attach. And the first thing we do in July is perform a mass mailing. And we haven't done that yet. We just got our data from Jennifer. So I would anticipate that will probably be going out next week. So everyone on the real property side, personal property side, mobile homes, everyone that has delinquent taxes will get a mass mailing from the law firm advising them that, hey, your taxes are delinquent. This is what's due now. And it'll give them the amount due for the next like three months in a row. So they can get an idea of what the penalties and interest and attorney's fees, it can start to add up very quickly. So after the mailing goes out in July, really August is a very good collection month for all of the entities. And then my report talks about it, but we follow up the July mass mailer with mass mailers in September, November, and February. So we try to stretch them out, you know, every couple of months or so throughout the delinquent tax year. And my assistant Katie will, and me too, but we'll come and sit with Jennifer a couple of weeks after these letters go out and we will review the entire delinquent tax roll and mark all folks that have paid or have made payment arrangements via payment agreement or are just making partial payments. And then we'll target those folks primarily high-dollar amount, starting down to perhaps target for a lawsuit. We don't file suits right away. We will turn around then and send an individualized notice of intent to sue letter to these individuals that have been targeted, advising them, bold letters, you've been targeted for a lawsuit. This has to be paid within 30 or 45 days, et cetera. And then Katie and I and Jennifer will follow those letters up within the timeframe, 30 or 45 days. If those have not paid, then we will either go ahead and file a suit in district court or we will start the process of conducting a title search on these properties. Once the title search has come back and these accounts have not paid, we'll go ahead and file a suit. The defendants in a delinquent tax suit are the property owners and any lien holders. And our property title search reveals those parties. All those records are available. Public records are in the county clerk's office. So there's quite a few steps we take before we actually file a lawsuit. Filing a lawsuit is really the last resort. But we do. We do it. We have stubborn folks out there. So that's kind of our lawsuit process. And then once the case has worked its way through the litigation steps, including obtaining service of citation on all the defendants, if there's still no payment or payment arrangements made, we'll set the case for trial in district court. Same thing, by the court date, if no payments have been made, we'll go ahead and take a judgment. And the judgment in district court forecloses the tax liens and it authorizes the taxing jurisdictions to put the property in a public tax sale. So that's kind of the litigation cycle there. And we didn't have any tax sales. We had one in June of 2022, but this report doesn't cover that timeframe. We did have one, but it involved Bluffdale ISD properties. Yeah.
In September.
In September. Okay. So anyway, that's kind of where we are on our calendar for litigation and whatnot. So I'm gonna go on down here. So judgments. That's where we have foreclosed the tax liens and authorized the entities to put their property in tax sale. We obtained four judgments involving four different properties. The judgment sought the collection of $1,300 and some change in delinquent-based taxes. And quite often after we take a judgment and people know, hey, this is going to be in a tax sale in a couple of months, they'll finally pay. So we released four judgments involving four properties. The release has collected $2,100 and some change in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest. And again, we will not release a judgment until all of the taxes, penalties, and interests are paid, court costs, abstract fees, and perhaps any attorney ad litem fees. And the other jurisdictions, of course, not just the city of Steenville. One thing that's really important that the city authorized not too long ago was adoption of Tax Code Section 3311. Tax Code 3311 allows for the delinquency date on business personal property and mobile homes to attach on April 1 of the year rather than July 1. For example, the 2022 delinquent personal property accounts and mobile home accounts became officially delinquent and turned over to the law firm for collection on April 1. became officially delinquent and turned over to the law firm for collection on April 1. So it's a couple of months prior to that July date. The legislative intent behind this was that businesses close, they can move around, mobile homes can certainly be removed from the county. So it gives us a little bit of extra window, a jump on it, so to speak, to collect those dollars before they disappear and become uncollectible. And having said that, Katie and I, at least two or three times since April, have really put our boots on the ground and met with Jennifer, Ms. Carey, and pulled up the delinquent personal property roll and printed out statements on these high-dollar businesses that are now owed and delinquent. And we put on our tennis shoes and our jeans and marched out and put statements on mobile homes or dropped them off with the businesses and talked to people firsthand. And so I kind of wanted to throw those numbers in here. So our boots-on-the-ground approach so far on the 2022 delinquent business, personal property, and mobile home accounts has already collected 3,500 in base taxes for the city. One paid in full, right there, wrote us a check. It was a restaurant, local restaurant, I won't name names. Manager came, wrote us a check right there as soon as we walked in and explained to who we were. And that was for 1,400 in base taxes. And remember, this is collecting an awful lot for Stevensville ISD. You know, the majority of the delinquent tax base really is owed to the ISD. So we really enjoy getting out and meeting people and explaining. You know, people get these letters from us or probably even their tax bills or their appraisal notices, and they're like, eh, you know, it hits the circular file. But once we meet people in person and really explain what this is all about, it really educates them and brings to light the fact that the penalty and interest on these delinquent taxes is worse than any kind of loan that you're getting at a 7% rate right now, which is high by current standards. So anyway, we enjoy doing that a lot and getting out and explaining how the system works. Jennifer, feel free to chime in or Katie, if y'all want to. Yeah, okay. Okay. So behind this, this report, page 1 and 2, are just the statistics printed from our law firm information as to lawsuits filed, the numbers there, the defendants, the style of the lawsuit and the defendants, in case y'all know any of these people. We have a lot of repeat offenders. I don't think anybody in this room, probably, but that seems to be a recurring theme. We'll sue someone. It takes about a year for the lawsuit to work its way to, through the litigation process to judgment. We'll take it all the way to a tax sale, and then they pay, and then the next year they're delinquent again. So we just have to get on this merry-go-round with them. You would think that they would learn. But anyway, so the statistics regarding the stats in that letter on page 1 and 2 are all here in the report and back everything up. And then I kind of like to talk about really the status of your delinquent tax roll as of June the 1st, because the numbers look big, but they're a little bit deceiving. So on June the 1st, the outstanding balance owed to the city of Stevensville was $42,400 and some change. And then on this page right here that has this graph on it, breaks down what is owed in real property, manufactured homes, and personal property. I won't go through all the individual numbers. Y'all can, y'all can take a look at those. And then the pie chart below just kind of gives you a visual of how it's all sliced up with the majority of the delinquent tax roll. $22,700 and some changes on real property, and then it breaks down personal and manufactured homes. And then on the next page, this is, this is where we like to really break down the delinquent tax roll and explain that that $42,000 and some change that was owed as of June the 1st is really not an accurate picture of the collectible dollars on your delinquent tax roll. So what we do is we subtract the number of bankruptcy dollars, the number of deferral dollars, the number of abstracts of judgment dollars. An abstract of judgment is a, we had taken a judgment on a business that is no longer in business, and the last thing we can do as a collection effort is to file an abstract of judgment in the event that that former business owner owns real property in the county or tries to do business again. More than likely, a creditor or a title company would pick up that abstract and won't issue clean title until that abstract is paid. And they do, they come around, they surprise you sometimes eight or nine years after the fact. So anyway, we do that. And then we also have a significant number, unfortunately, $6,667 of just uncollectible business property, businesses that are just gone. We can't find the former owner or old mobile homes that have been removed or sometimes burned down. And just over the years, does these have to remain on the tax roll for 10 years? And while that looks like a high number, the original delinquency dollar amount probably was only $500 or less. And we typically won't pursue any kind of property that has about $500 less due on it, because in order to do so, the amount of court costs now in these district court cases, it's, they run a minimum of about $750. So if there's only a couple hundred dollars due, is that really fair to your taxpayer? So that's why that number is what it is. And then we also have about $6,600 tied up in active lawsuits right now. And then we have about $2,200 wherein we're pending our title and abstract reports and/or we have sent individual notice of intent to sue letters. So when you subtract all those line items for the $42,474 on the, on the delinquent tax roll, we're down to just $677, which we think is pretty amazing. And then everything, everything I just mentioned is kind of created on another pie chart. And I apologize, it says Mills County Delinquent Tax Roll. That is a typo, but the numbers are correct. So just wanted to let y'all know. And then last but not least, as some of y'all know, we recently acquired the city's municipal court fees and fines collection, and it took a couple of months to get up and running. Where's Monica?
Oh, here.
And, but once we got up and running, the first, the first month that we started was really about the middle of April. So as an addendum, I didn't have these numbers until last week. I just, we just did a little bit of breakdown of our activity, letters mailed, address updates, phone activity, et cetera. And the total amount of dollars for really two and a half months' worth of active collection work, we have collected $13,149 for the city, which we think is good. Yeah. And Jennifer had an interesting comment when she was looking over this in her office a little while ago. So we, and just for example, in April, this is from municipal court, delinquent fees and fines, we mailed 164 letters, but 69 of them came back as bad address. So that just goes to show you have a lot of probably college students that no longer live in town or people that are just passing through. But I can assure you, and Monica knows all this because she sat with us when we were explaining the whole process numerous times, that we have a wonderful, wonderful address skip tracing system that will find these people. So we never, we never just get a letter back, bad address, and toss it and toss the account back to the court as uncollectible. We'll keep working that until we find these people. That's all I got. Y'all have anything?
Questions for Carrie? Jennifer?
Yeah, well, we're happy to do this however frequently y'all want me to. We presented a report to the school about a month ago, wasn't it, maybe? Yeah. And we've done a couple of the other entities here. Jennifer and I are meeting tomorrow with the new Bluffdale ISD superintendent, and I have a little collection report for him as well. Yeah? Okay.
Carrie, Katie, thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Killen.
That's RZ 2023-005. Mr. Ryan Studdard is representing Aaron Calder for a rezone at 711 Miller, which is parcel 32523. It's at the Miller Edition Block 2, Lot 1. This property is currently zoned neighborhood business. It has a future land use of single-family. They are asking that it be rezoned to R 1.5. This will allow for a smaller lot size. The lot is currently, it's a 70 by 100-foot lot. So this would allow this single-family home to be constructed, allow for a smaller home to be constructed on the, on the property, minimum square footage of 1,000 feet for the structure itself. So it takes this lot, but it's in a part of town where the lot sizes are a little smaller dimensions and allows for the construction of a single-family home. Still meets the, the future land use designation of single-family, but it does take it from B1 neighborhood business to single-family, which again conforms with the future use. The Planning and Zoning Commission convened on June 21, 2023, and by unanimous vote of seven to zero, recommended the city council approve the rezone from B1 to R 1.5, single-family residential. And with that, be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve.
Do you see the square footage of the home, 1,000 square feet?
That's the minimum square footage for this district. I think they're looking at about a 1,200 to 1,300 square foot home. Is that correct?
It's 1,217.
1,217. And this is Mr. Studdard, his business partner, and then Mr. Calder to their right.
Other questions? Attorney General will enter a public hearing on, number 10 here by pencil, S 500, oh, excuse me, the R 32523 parcel, 711 Miller. Anybody want to come and speak in favor of the proposal? It's your opportunity, if you want to.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us again here tonight. We had the great fortune of doing this before right next door at the end of last year. So we're excited to be back in Stevensville again. I'm a graduate of Tarleton State University myself, and so getting to work in Stevensville is always exciting. We're very thankful for this opportunity to come here again.
Questions?
Was the home next door that you completed, was it somewhere square footage?
It is 300 square foot bigger. It is just over 1,500 square feet. Yes, sir. And part of the reason for this one being a hair smaller is there is a 25-foot corner setback that is entailed with a corner lot, which makes it impossible to build larger than 1,200 square feet without asking for a variance also.
Other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
If anyone wants to speak in opposition to the request. Attorney General will close the public hearing. Case RZ 2023-005, consider approval of rezoning. Property is 711 Miller, parcel R 32523, being 1.177 acres. S 5,000 JW Miller Edition Block 2, Lot 1 of the city of Stevensville, E. Rath County, Texas, from neighborhood business B1 to Single Family Residential District. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the rezone, case number 2023-0-18. Rezone S 500 JW Miller Edition Block 2, Lot 1, 711 Miller, from B1 to R 1.5, Single Family Residential District.
Motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Is that it, Steve?
That's it, sir.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Mark McClinton, Public Works Committee.
Mr. Mayor, Public Works Committee met June 20. Everyone was present. We had one item on the agenda that was a request that was brought to the city about utility service outside the city limits, whether it should remain as it is now, a an administrative decision, or should it be elevated to a council decision. We had a discussion following that. We kind of got into a few other areas about outside the city limits utilities. And so in total of it was that the committee asked staff formally through a motion to prepare some additional language that would clarify how we made decisions, how decisions were made on outside the city limit utility service. And again, that was a unanimous decision from the, from the committee.
So we recommend that staff will need to bring it back to us.
That is correct.
Okay.
And I think there's an ordinance listed here that we're not going to consider tonight. I think we're gonna look at, we're gonna look at other options that will probably, I guess, we'll come back to Public Works Committee next month or the month after, or...
You can go back to the committee or you can come straight to council. It's up to you, sir.
Why don't we just have them bring something to us in the next meeting?
Okay.
Okay.
On trust.
That's the end of the Public Works Committee report, sir.
Matty, thank you, sir.
All righty. So we had our committee meeting on June 20th to review a few applications for vacancies on some citizen boards. And I would like to make the recommendation to the council to approve, I guess, the motion for the council to approve Ricky Thurman for Place 2 for the Airport Advisory Board.
Second.
And then my next motion would be to...
If you don't, you need to deal with that motion first.
Oh, sorry.
Let me just, for clarification, could we have made a one motion for all of them at one time?
Yes.
So we could ask for, if she'd like to modify her motion?
She can withdraw it.
She can withdraw it and then come back with another motion and put all the names on the ballot.
Okay. So I'd like to withdraw the motion I just placed and place it with, that we'd like to place Ricky Thurman for Place 2 on the advisory board, and then Gerald Cook for Place 7 on the Stevensville Economic Development Authority.
Second. Have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Mr. Newby's gone today, so Mr. Reesman has agreed to take one of his committees tonight.
Okay, so, Harris is here.
Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward on this, please, on number 8, Public Health and Safety Committee Report?
Mr. Mayor, just seeing my members of the council at the last committee meeting on June 20th, 2023, for Public Health and Safety, presented the request to change the current parking restrictions regarding West Long Street located in Code of Ordinances 75.02, Schedule 2 to read. A, no parking zones are established on the city streets as follows. Long Street West, on both sides from its intersection with Graham to its intersection with Alexander Road, at all times. In following presentation and discussion and with questioning, a motion was made by Mr. Newby and seconded by Mrs. Durfee to change the parking restrictions as noted above and bring that recommendation to council tonight. The committee voted unanimously to bring that forward.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the People Police Department presented the changes in Ordinance 7502, Schedule 2 to read. No parking zones are established on the city streets as follows. Location, Long Street West, both sides from the intersection to the west of Graham to the intersection of West Alexander Road, at all times.
Sure. Motion is second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're to consider the approval of ordinances revising, I'm sorry.
Number 10.
10, okay. Consider approval for automatic aid agreement with the E. Rath County Volunteer Fire Rescue Department. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, we're seeking approval for an inter-local agreement with E. Rath County Volunteer Fire Rescue for an automatic aid agreement. Today, we enjoy a mutual aid agreement. We need help, we call, they need help, they call, and we respond. This agreement is more automated to where through preset policies, procedures, and call types, we can automatically dispatch them as if they were one of our units. They can dispatch us as if we were one of their units. So it's automatic. It's a quicker response. We're looking for the future of the combined dispatch center to even bring more leverage and efficiencies to this agreement. But today, we already work very closely together. We train together. We have policies we share. And this evening, or this afternoon, was a good instance of how this would work. We had a major accident up off of Lingleville Road, and we dispatched an ambulance from Station 2 and an engine from Station 1. There was a issue with Engine 1, but they were already monitoring our radio and heard the dispatch and responded quicker than we could have called them and was on scene, I believe, probably before our ambulance. You didn't... You didn't know that there was a hiccup at all in the system. It worked as it would have with this agreement, would this agreement be in place in the future. Again, we work very closely together and be happy to answer any questions about the agreement, and Chief Brooks is here as well from E. R. F. County Volunteer Fire Rescue to answer any questions as well.
Question, Brandon, you looked at the agreement?
Excuse me?
Did you review the agreement?
Yes, I did.
You're okay with it?
Yes.
Questions for chief?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Mayor, but I think this is a great program. I appreciate you putting that together. Both of y'all, very much.
Lot of work on their side as well as ours. We went back and forth quite a bit to get this done.
I think y'all both very much.
Make a, make a motion for the approval of the automatic aid agreement with the E. R. F. County Fire Volunteer Fire Rescue Department.
Second.
Have a motion as second? Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And then number eleven, consider approval of donation of the fire department equipment.
This is a, tonight, we're seeking approval to donate equipment that has exceeded its life and usefulness within our department. Being a regulated department with the Texas Commission on Fire Protection, a lot of our equipment has time limits. It actually has term limits from the date of manufacture. Although it can still pass all of the life safety inspections for use, it cannot be used any longer in a regulated department. We'd like to donate that to E. R. F. County Volunteer Fire Rescue for either use and/or dispersal within the county so that other volunteer departments and other departments that we work with can utilize that equipment that they don't have today.
Since last week is the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary, none of it's that old.
No, I don't think it's that old. Maybe just under that.
Okay, do I have a motion for the approval of donation of fire department equipment?
I'll make a motion to approve the donation of fire equipment as described above.
Second.
Have a motion as second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alon, for taking over tonight.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Mayor, council, we reviewed the financial statements ending May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. The financial indicators are about what we anticipate. We are eight, eight months into our fiscal year. For our property tax, we received forty-five thousand in the month of May, which is four-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand increase over the funds that we collected last fiscal year to date. We've collected ninety-seven percent of our budget, and that's a hundred and seventy-one thousand less than we had anticipated. For our sales tax, we received eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand in May, and that's resulted in eight-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand or fifteen percent more than the funds that we collected last fiscal year to date. We have collected seventy-one percent of our budget, and that's about four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand higher than anticipated. Of the thirty-five-point-four-million revenue that we've received to date, fifty-three percent is in the general fund, twenty-three percent is water, wastewater fund, eight percent is in capital projects fund, and six percent is in the landfill fund. We've received eighty percent of our total budgeted revenues through May, and that's three-point-nine-million more than anticipated. That's due to taxes, charges for services, and other revenues such as investment income, donations, and debt proceeds. We have received twenty-two-point-six-million less in revenue through May than last fiscal year to date, but that's due to our debt proceeds. So if we take those out of the equation, we've received one-point-six-million more in taxes, seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand more in intergovernmental, and three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand more in charges for services over last fiscal year to date. Of the thirty-nine-million spent to date, forty-one percent is in the water wastewater fund, thirty-nine percent in general fund, eight percent in capital projects, and five percent in landfill. We've expended forty-one percent of our total budgeted expenditures through May. That's almost twenty-two-million less than anticipated due to personnel, contractual, and the big one is capital outlay. We spent nine-million more in expenditures through May than last year to date, and the bulk of that is our capital projects. CETA has received an overall seventy-five percent of its budgeted revenue through May. That's forty-two-thousand more than last year to date, and seventy-five-thousand more than anticipated due to taxes and interest income. CETA has spent an overall twenty-five percent of budgeted expenditures through May. It's a hundred-and-three-thousand more than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to grant dispersments, but it's seven-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand less than anticipated due to capital outlay and grant dispersments. Are there any questions?
Questions for Monica?
Monica, I had a question on the two-year chart for sales tax.
Okay.
I noticed a pretty substantial jump in the TIF revenue month over month.
So on, on the TIF revenue, with the Washington Commons, we can kind of get those monthly, and so we book them. On some of the other areas where there's several different businesses involved, I have to go through the comp trailers report, so I do it annually, so you're seeing that annual jump from scratch. That's what it is.
Other questions?
And I can just say, I love those TIFs. Not really. They're a lot of work.
We're about to do five more, so just get ready.
Have we told the county that? Or the CAD?
They're gonna do it.
Well, along those lines, have we, have we looked at ways to streamline?
We're working on that for budget next year. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next time, the consent agenda, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Have a motion as second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next time, comment by city manager.
I don't have any comments today, mayor.
Council members?
I don't have any comments.
No comment.
No comment.
No comment. No comment, sir.
Thank you very much. I, in compliance with provisions of Texas Open Meetings Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code annotated accordance with Section five-five-one dot oh-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property. Now, we're going into session, and we'll be back after the session's over.